Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Tuesday, October 26, 2021. This is our Order of Business in a regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council. Madam Clerk, can you please take roll call? Yes. Dave Abdallah.
Here.
Zuhair Abdalhak.
Here.
Mo Baydoun.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Here.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
And Tom Wenzel.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum. Thank you. Tonight, Councilman Mo Baydoun will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. First, we have Agenda Approval.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Baydoun.
The Dearborn Heights City Council approved the agenda of the regular meeting of October 26, 2021, as submitted. Support?
Support by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Approval of Minutes. This is minutes from the electronically-held regular meeting of October 12, 2021.
Madam Chair.
Councilman.
Abdallah.
Abdallah.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council approve the agenda for the regular meeting of October 26, 2021, as submitted. No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Sorry, wrong one. Is it the minutes?
Yes.
Yeah, the minutes. I missed it. Sorry. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the minutes for the electronically-held regular meeting of October 12, 2021, as outlined in Item 4A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Baydoun. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdalhak.
There is an item which was the number submitted by the Controller was off by around $9,000. That's Motion 21506. I ask the Controller to correct the number, please, and submit an amendment to reflect that number. I ask the Controller to submit an amendment next meeting to reflect the correction of the number he submitted to us last meeting.
We didn't have the number. We just knew it from the year before. This year, then, we got the number.
I wish you would have asked Mrs. Adskin. She would have gave you the right number, sir.
We got it. The information was oriented into when we got the number.
I'm not going to go any further. I just want you to submit the right number to us, please. Thank you.
Are you asking us to remove that from the agenda?
Yes, please.
From the minutes. What would be removed?
It's in the minutes. Yeah, it's in the minutes. Okay. Well, let's take a vote to... What is that item number again?
21506.
Okay, this is from 21506. Councilman Abdalhak wants to remove that right now from the minutes until we get the correct number. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. We will remove that and send that back for the correct numbers.
Madam Chair, here are the correct numbers.
Okay. You might want to give it to...
To our Controller.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. At this time, is there any further discussion on the approval of the minutes with the removal of 21506? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Public Hearing and Comment on Agenda Items. There is a two-minute limit. You come up to the microphone here. You can comment on agenda items. We cannot answer you back, though, so you can speak for up to two minutes.
Council Chair.
Councilman Wenzel.
I'd like to speak on an agenda item that's most likely going to be brought up, Item 9A, before... Could save us some time to run down the line to the public comments.
Okay.
Just take less than two minutes.
Okay. Go ahead and get in line.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm just thinking for just the proper protocol, because we're not allowed to answer residents, would he not have to comment as a citizen?
That's...
As a resident, not as a councilperson?
Right. You would be a resident.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead. We've got someone up here. What is your name?
Yes, my name is Charles Blackwell. I would like to state about Agenda Item 11A, the owner of Allen Brothers, James Allen, sends offensive emails to me that were beneath the dignity of any profession, let alone a legal profession. James Allen told me that God destined for me to get shot, and that's the reason that I'm paralyzed. James Allen made remarks, sexual remarks, stating that he can spread his DNA into the world, and I cannot. James Allen also stated to me via email that I was a pathetic little wheelchair boy. I am asking for this body to do the right thing and counsel the Allen Brothers contract. There are plenty of reputable and professional law firms in Metro Detroit that can serve this city. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here to speak about Item 9A and clear up a couple misconceptions. Our intent by cosponsoring this request to establish a public safety commission was to do something good for the overall safety and well-being of the residents of Dearborn Heights. Our vision is for commissions largely involve the public relations aspect of our Police Department and Fire Department. We would also include the DPW and ordinance departments. Other departments may be added if deemed necessary by the commission. Some areas that the commission could address would be citywide neighborhood watch programs. We have several excellent satellite neighborhood watch programs scattered throughout our city. I see no reason why we should not have the entire city involved in neighborhood watch programs. We should seek funding for these neighborhood watch programs. We should set a goal to have every street in Dearborn Heights involved in neighborhood watch programs within 12 months. The commission could look into city budgeting at least two neighborhood watch police officers to help residents establish and maintain top-notch neighborhood watch programs. The commission could also assist our Fire Department in promoting their events, including Fire Prevention Week. Fire Prevention Week is a great awareness program for our residents. Our Fire Department does a great job promoting this safety program, but they can't do it alone. Any firefighter will tell you smoke detectors are an absolute essential in every home. Our Fire Department has a great smoke detector giveaway program. The program includes installing the smoke detectors, if necessary, in our neighbors' homes. I know for a fact that a large percentage of homes in Dearborn Heights do not have properly-operated smoke detectors. The potential for disaster is extremely high, a matter of life and death. The commission could help get the word out about these programs. Another great program the firefighters offer is File for Life, File of Life, which is a refrigerator magnet packet containing vital medical information about the occupants of their home in the event that the person needing assistance is the only one at the home. The commission could also assist in promoting fundraisers such as Annual Firefighters Chili Cook-Off and making aware the charities such as the Great Lakes Burn Camp. The commission could help and assist the DPW as a city council member. A large number of my calls I get are related to DPW, which include trash pickup, trees, and street damage problems. The other majority of the calls I receive are ordinance-related.
Okay, Councilman. Sorry, time is up.
Okay.
Thank you. Next person, we... Come up to the microphone, please. Two minutes.
My name's Leslie Windless, 23469 Annapolis Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan, 48125. My comment is on 11A, and I just wanted to follow up from my comment at the last meeting regarding this item. And I kind of got choked up because I didn't know that the person that this was said to was going to be here tonight. I think it's very disgraceful, and so I want to address two things that were said to me in response to my concern being brought up. And one was a long list of things that this person said. I guess that was supposed to justify what was being said. There's nothing that anyone could say that justifies somebody who works for the city saying these things. If it were to one of you, and I'm pretty close with most of you up there, I would feel the same way. I would feel that you should step down. I would feel that you do not represent our city. We can't sit here and have a hate has no home campaign and have all these signs around the city and then pay someone who says things like what was said, and you guys all have a copy of it. The next thing I wanted to address was the comment about the fact that Mr. Allen doesn't directly handle our cases. His name is on the building, so any business that you give to him, as also stated by him, goes to his children's colleges, and I don't think that he deserves another penny. So I need clarification as to why we can't just go with someone else for all of the things. I guess it was FEMA and some other things that were brought up. Why we can't just go with another company that isn't discriminatory against people who are disabled. I'll yield the rest of my time, and I really hope you guys answer this once it comes up on the agenda. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, Mayor Bazey, and good evening, council members. My statement really does not have anything to do with politics or condoning anything. It's basically just a direct statement about what I do and what I need to be done in the future. Whatever decision the body, this honorable body makes on Item 11A is their decision, obviously, and I would accept that, obviously, but I think they need to transition, do any transition very carefully. I, as the Director of CEDD and CDBG, like to emphasize that our department uses Harry Keller-Gurakas as our designated attorney for the federal program. Please take into consideration that Harry is the designated attorney. He is currently working on quite a few projects with our department, and just dropping them at... Tonight, basically, will disrupt the department going forward. Please plan any transition very carefully, and I thank you all very much. Have a good night.
Next, please.
Good evening, Honorable... My name is David Jones, and I'm the other shareholder of Allen Brothers PLC, and I stand today and respectfully request that you reject the council chair's recommendation as it relates to the Allen Brothers contract. Not only does she misquote me in the proposed resolution as to the statement that our office put out saying we blamed the victim, I'm going to read the part of the statement that she attributed to me that clearly shows we did not blame the victim. First, again, I would like to apologize, like I've done in the past, for anything anyone had taken offense to Mr. Allen's statements directed towards an anonymous person who we now know is Charles Blackwell. But more importantly, I would like to give this body a little bit of insight. Since January 2020, I'm the City Attorney of Inkster. Since 2020, Mr. Blackwell has been filing frivolous complaints, dozens and dozens, I think it's reached a total of over 100 frivolous FOIA requests. We've been... We and my partner have been subject to personal attacks, mockery. All I have ever done as the City Attorney in Inkster is respond appropriately and legally. All we have done is gotten his cases dismissed. We've agreed to dismiss many of them, but that has not stopped the mockery that Mr. Blackwell has done anonymously to me, my partner, and members of my law firm. Again, we strongly urge you to reject the request by the council chair, and I would just end by indicating, reading the bottom of my statement that was released to the press. "We have defended ourselves against the hyperbolic and unhinged attacks for many months in private and are saddened that now this has broken into the public view in this way." And I'm quoted saying that. "Mr. Blackwell has attempted to use the First Amendment, the Open Meetings Act, the Freedom of Information Act, and now the press as a sword against our firm and against us personally."
Thank you. Your time is up, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman.
Your name, and it is two-minute limit.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council Chair, and the rest of the respectable council members. My name is Attorney Nabeel Yad. I'm founder of the Arab American Civil Rights League, a former commissioner of the state appointed by a former governor, representing numerous civil rights organizations around the country and around the region here in southeastern Michigan. And I say this not to boost myself, but to talk about civil rights and talk about the importance of what the Allen Brothers has meant for this community. Jim Allen, I've known him for many years. I've known his family. I know that he has supported so many fights, so many causes to the vulnerable across this whole region. I can't... There is not one individual from our community that has not been impacted favorably with the support of the Allen Brothers and specifically Jim Allen. I know his heart. I know his soul. I'm not condoning. No one is condoning what Jim did or said or what have you. But what we're saying is just because you have a physical disability does not give you the right, does not give you the right to sit there and bully other individuals. And I can assure you, and I've dealt with the disability community when I was chairman of the Airport Authority, I can tell you one thing, they would be disgraced. They would be disgraced.
Thanks, sir. Towards us.
I mean, I'm talking towards you.
Thank you.
They would be disgraced, the fact that all the good causes, things that these individuals have fought for, and yet this individual goes around for two years and bullies a certain individual, calls him up after his father dies, who was very, very close to his dad, and says some horrific things, and hangs up, talks about his daughter and her chest and everything else, talks about his son and calls him a retard. For two years, Allen Brothers had at their disposal numerous things they could have done, including criminal investigation for harassment or things of this nature. He did nothing. For two years, this person continued, and by the way, used an Arab-American female's name in the emails. I'm really truly disgusted that even someone would be concerned to support the bullish act of this individual. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, you have two minutes.
Hello, I'm Rachel LaPointe, and... From Dearborn Heights. And regarding Item 11A, I would just like to say that it doesn't matter if someone was responding to an anonymous email. The issue is that the city needs to contract with people who are behaving in an ethical and moral way, and your actions when you're talking to someone anonymous, that shows your character. So I hope that the council doesn't get lost or bogged down in details about who said what or why it was said. What matters is the facts of what was said, and that that illustrates someone's moral character, and whether the city wants to be in a relationship, a contractual relationship, with someone who is showing that kind of character. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, at this time, let's move on. Next item on the agenda is fund transfers and current claims.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Baydoun.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the current claims 6-1 through 633 as submitted.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I have question about Item 16.
Okay. Councilman Abdalhak, go ahead.
Question to the Recreation Department. I want to know if she exceeded the budget which she has, because the bill is for $15,000, and in her budget, there is only $14,303.
What number is that? 16.
16.
H&amp;H Glass and Madel Incorporated.
Pull the microphone closer.
Item 616. They submitted bill for $15,000 and some dollars, and there is only in the budget $14,303. Did she exceed her budget? Does she have to come to the city council, because it's over $1,500, the access? Does she have to come in front of us to ask for more money?
For a budget amendment, you mean?
Yes.
Controller.
Okay. I do recommend that we remove this item until she comes with the amendment to ask for more money to cover this expense.
Councilman Muscat.
But I think she's using last year's budget money for this.
Exactly, but the bill is for $15,900 and some dollars.
Well, I know she's using $14,303 from last year's budget, plus I do believe that we gave her the okay to replace those doors, not earlier this year. We did.
Okay. If we did, then I would draw my...
Okay.
We did.
Any further discussion in regards to this before we vote on it? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have reports from there. This is the Aflac Group master application.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdallah.
All right. Here we go. Okay. I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the Aflac Group master application, City of Dearborn Heights, Number 17738, subject to Corporation Counsel Miatki's further review and approval of the underlying policy documents. Further, the mayor and the city clerk are authorized on behalf of the city to execute the application and any other documents related to it that are approved by Corporation Counsel Miatki to put the group coverage into effect as outlined in Item 8A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Baydoun. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is reports from city officials. This is Councilman Abdalhak, Councilman Muscat, and Councilman Wenzel establishing a public safety commission.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdalhak.
I move to approve this.
Councilman Wenzel supports.
Council Chair.
Councilman Baydoun.
I just have a couple of questions on this. I think this is actually... I think it's a good idea for what it's possessing, but I feel like we also need some information on this as well with respect to my colleagues on here. This is something that I know... I've had a conversation with the fire chief. This is something where... It's a great idea, but I also think that this body needs to understand it a little bit more, so I would love for this to be tabled and moved to a study session.
Okay.
And I mean that with respect, because I don't know enough information on this.
See, I don't either.
Yeah.
And it's just... It's something that I would want to learn about. I heard what, you know, our Councilman Tom Wenzel spoke about earlier today, and I just want to know more information, and I also want to make sure that our police and fire are also okay with this. And I also want to make sure that our police and fire are also okay with this. Thank you so much, sir.
Council Chair.
Okay, I got Councilman Abdallah, Councilman Coniston, Councilman Muscat, and...
I'll be the last.
I'll go the rest of the way. Okay, yeah. Let me write everybody down. Councilman Abdallah.
Yeah, we're having technical difficulty tonight. That's not normal for us.
You just got to bring your mic up to you.
Usually, they're more sensitive. Tonight, for some reason, they're not. So I apologize. Go ahead, please.
Okay. Council Chair, with due respect to this particular motion, I, for one, I did speak with both chiefs, and I'd like to hear a little bit more from the council members in regards to their thought process, but I've spoken with multiple people in the police and in the fire department. And yes, I do take into account and understand the fact that they may be a little biased, obviously, there when they're giving me their information, and that's fine, but I know enough to be able to dissect that. But with that being the case, you know, I've always been the believer, if something's not broken, why fix it? And, you know, and I know, and I want to make it clear, I know this is no indication on the fire or the police department when they brought this forward by the council people, so I'm not indicating that. But with that being the case, I think we have a good thing going. Our police chief is doing a great job. Our police department is doing great. Our fire department is doing a phenomenal job, and I don't see personally a reason for this. In addition to that, there were some things that were concerning. First of all, as far as how this is going to interact with Act 78, okay, as far as hiring is concerned, that's going to be very concerning, because in this, with this particular commission, they'll be able to establish and administer the general policies of the police and firefighting functions of the city. And I have a problem with that, because no matter who you put on, whether it's a council member, and I'm just going to use myself personally, you know, other than the fact I know that police carry guns and they give us tickets when we're doing something bad and, you know, and the firemen put out our fires. I mean, in general, I don't know enough, and I don't consider myself educated enough in those two particular departments' policies for me to administer and establish guidelines for them and policies, number one. And if it's a resident, it could be possibly the same thing. But again, there is no problem to be able to add this type of a commission. And the problem I've got with that, you have two people in charge now that are doing, again, a great job. And I know that the council members didn't bring it forward as an indication as to the job they're doing, but unless I'm convinced otherwise, I don't see the advantages of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Coniston.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with Councilman Abdallah. If it's not broke, don't fix it. I think this provision in the charter was put in when we had a volunteer fire department, a part-time police department. My father, who is, I believe, the only living charter commissioner, said that they had a presentation from the City of Highland Park, and they adopted Act 78 Civil Service. We have a police chief that has an MBA, a lot of expertise, a lot of training, a fire chief that also has a lot of expertise. We have a neighborhood watch program now. Citizen input, I know, is always welcome. We have a community police officer, but I think we need to leave the expertise of police and fire protection to the experts. Thank you.
Okay, I got Councilman Abdallah...
Can you... Do you mind waving to me so I can finish reading my statement right before?
Councilman Ray Muscat.
Can you allow Councilman Wenzel to finish his statement from before, or do I have to go first?
I don't care.
Go ahead, Tom. Go ahead.
Okay. Just like I said before, this commission's intent is basically a public relation commission. The section in the charter which provides for establishing a public safety commission was written long ago. I feel our department heads, officers, and union representation have established general policies for their departments that are functioning well. The commission has absolutely no intent on writing policy for these departments. The commission would consist, but not limited to, representative of all departments included, along with representatives from senior citizens and school districts. Also, participants may be added that would be deemed necessary while forming a commission. Our main goal is public peace and safety of persons and property in our great city of Dearborn Heights. The commission will build a bridge between our various departments and the residents. Our goal is to attract quality people to create a great place to work and live. This commission can be an important piece of the puzzle moving our city forward into the future.
Okay. Councilman Muscat.
Thank you, Council Chair. With all due respect to my fellow council members, I fully understand what we wanted to do with this, but in light, I don't believe anybody else on the council knows what we really wanted to do. This was short and vague. I got phone calls from fire department people, personnel, and I understand their feelings toward this, because they're not aware of what we really want. And I think the best course of action is what Councilman Baydoun said, to move this to a study session, so we can have everything outlined and to make sure that this commission never, ever steps on the feet of the police or fire in their... And how they run their departments, because I believe that would be the worst thing to do of having non-professional people tell professionals what to do. So that's my say, and I guess we can go forward with either a motion that Mr. Abdalhak put or Councilman Mo Baydoun.
Yeah, I too do agree that we need more information on this, and I think a study session would be the best thing to do at this time.
We already have a motion on the table and a second.
Madam Chair, I still have to say something.
Sure. Councilman Abdalhak.
Either we follow the charter of the city or we don't. This is a commission in the charter. It was established a long time ago. If this didn't happen before, it doesn't mean we give away our responsibility to follow the charter. I ask this council to follow the charter, no more, no less. Then the details, it will be worked out between the police and fire, in the legal department, and the administration. Then it comes back to us to approve it. But to be in violation of the charter is not acceptable to me. Whatever you want to vote on, it's up to you. But personally, I recommend this happen, whether today or next meeting. If you want more information, I don't mind, and I hope that the fire and the police would
If you want more information, I don't mind, and I hope that the fire and the police would have called me at least to ask me, since I am the sponsor of this. Apparently, they ask everybody else except me.
Nobody called me.
But I do agree with Mr. Mo Baydun, and I don't mind to set it for a study session next meeting, not to drag it for next year or the year after.
Right.
I want to follow the charter or we are in violation of the charter. That is a simple issue. There is a charter, and we should have commission for ethics. We should have every commission there is in the charter. We should follow it because the previous administration, if they didn't follow it, it doesn't mean we sit and do nothing. We must follow the charter until we modify it, then we can talk about other things.
Okay.
As of today, I don't mind to change my motion to go to study session next meeting.
Yes, next meeting.
Thank you.
I'll support that motion.
Council Chair.
Support by Councilman Muscat. Any further discussion before we vote?
Council Chair, I just want to understand, and I just want to say this a little bit here to my colleagues, and thank you guys for bringing this forward. I think, I mean, I'm not, nobody, I don't think anybody's shunning it down.
I'm not shunning it.
I just, and I just want to say, I think it's important that we want to get proper, you know, information on it. That's all.
I understand. You have every right to know. I have been studying this for a long time. Probably, it was my duty to talk about it more than just Ray and Tom, but I couldn't because I will be violating, you know, the open act.
You can do it individually.
Individually, I will contact every one of you personally and discuss with you what we need. I do not want to step, I don't want the police and fire to understand or misunderstand. We're not trying to step on their toes. We're trying to help them do their job in a better way for the resident of the city. That's all.
And that's great, and I just want you to know, and one of the reasons why I'm asking for a study session is because myself, I have a lot of questions, and like Councilman Muscat said, it was vague. I didn't know what I was reading, and I just didn't understand. I mean, it can be illustrated so many different ways. And so that was the, I mean, but after listening to what Councilman Wenzel said today, I mean, it made some sense, and seeing it moving in that direction, I'd just like to have a study session in it. I'd like to hear from the police. I'd like to hear from the fire and from the administration as well.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair. There is so many issues in the cities. If just the police chief would sit at Panera at night between seven and 10:00 and see the dragon races, see the noise which the cars, the speeding, look at it. The other day, I almost got killed on John Daly by somebody who didn't even recognize the stop sign.
Okay. Council Chair. We're out of order now. I have Councilman Abdullah next.
Council Chair, me?
Yes.
Okay. So, actually, my experience is with the police and with fire, never had a problem as far as calling them about, just about anything, and then them giving me the right answers. But in addition to that, I know they've been very open to different citizen input, in addition to multiple town halls that I've been to, where they've been there, and I know Police Chief Mark Myers has been there, and I know our fire chief has been there. They're always open to ideas from citizens. So the thing I wanted to understand in regards to this is, as far as what is ultimately the achievement that's trying to be, for lack of better words, achieved in this? And I do understand that Councilman Zohair Abdellah's comment about that it's in the charter. I respect that, and I get that. But with that being the case, with the way the motion is, it doesn't clarify what is the ultimate goal of this commission. And I know you guys are saying, let's have a study session, and that's fine. I have no problem with that. But I'd like to know, what is the ultimate goal of this commission? Because there's an alternative to this, which would be like possibly an advisory board. I have no problem with that. So in other words, if it's made up of citizens, city council members, mayor, whoever, just advising or commenting on different things that they have concerns about and having them look into it, that's fine. But I'm not sure about a commission overseeing the police or the fire department.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
Councilman, I think that's something we will discuss at the study session. We've already agreed to take it to a study session. Any further discussion here would be kind of...
Correct. Council Chair.
I disagree though, Council Chair.
I mean, there was a statement that was made about the drag racing. I mean, there's two things, I mean, since that was brought up. I mean, I can tell you that we've had a few meetings with the chief and some residents, actually, at the police station, and the police has actually taken some strict laws right now against speeders, drag racers. They've impounded several cars already. They've given a lot of tickets. So they are taking precautions, they are actually enforcing, they're doing everything they can that we authorize over time. So they're already doing that part, their part with that. And, you know, with this here, I mean, it is, I mean, everybody said the same thing. It is vague, even with the, even with the study session. We really don't know what we're trying to do here, because, I mean, I can tell you, I've visited, you know, both the police station and the fire department. Our fire department, you know, I just hope that whatever we're trying to do here is not going to really infringe on some of their procedures, their policies, you know, whatever they have in place right now. Because I can tell you, I went to the fire station, you know, just about a few weeks back, you know, they've had people from other departments training in Dearborn Heights. You know, they had some of the most sophisticated stuff to pick up, you know, semi trucks, you know, vehicles in case there's, you know, a car gets rear-ended, rear into a semi truck. So we just don't, we don't want to lose any of the procedures, any of the policies. If we do get somebody in place, you know, somebody for, under this commission to write policies, then start changing policies, that's going to really, you know, these guys, they put their life on the line for the citizens. We just want to make sure that we're not going to risk their lives by changing anything, any of the policies.
Okay, thank you. At this time, would you like to...
Mayor, I will repeat myself again and again and again. We're not trying to step on the toes of the police and fire. They're doing a great job, and I told them this many times, and I'm not against them in any way, shape, or form. I voted for everything they asked for since I was appointed. But this is a charter. We follow it or not. Then the detail will be worked out with Mr. Miyatki, yourself, and the chief, both of them, and the city council. We're not going to create, you know, whatever you want, the electricity. We just want to help the police and fire do a better job for the resident, no more, no less.
Okay, at this time, let's take a vote on it. All those in...
Council Chair.
What are we voting on? Does the motion on the table?
The motion is to go to a study session with this.
Okay, so that's what's on here.
Corporate counsel?
Thank you. I just want to briefly say this because if it's going to go into a study session, then I think a few things need to be clarified, otherwise people are going to come to conclusions about what they should do before they know these things. So, one, the charter provision authorizes the establishment. It does not mandate it. So it's still with you in terms of discretion. Two, remember what I told you before with respect to Act 78. The pair prevails, so the collective bargaining agreement sets policies to the degree it does. Nothing else can end up being done that's contrary to that. Secondly, Act 78 is the general law of the state, is the next set of priorities, followed by something that would be in the charter. So if you have things that are already being addressed, either through the collective bargaining agreement or under Act 78, those things would continue to take priority to anything that would end up being done with respect to this. So if you're going to come into a meeting with an idea, recognize it's all going to be subject to those limitations, and I would also encourage you to be very careful about your discussions so that we don't end up having a potential Open Meetings Act violation alleged based on the fact that someone might consider you to be deliberating if you speak too much about this.
Okay.
Why be in an open meeting, though?
Let's just vote on, let's vote on this and get it over with. We're not being productive anymore.
Councilman Abdellah had something to say.
We're no longer being productive. We're just going back and forth.
Just 30 seconds, Madam Chair.
Okay.
We understand there is Act 78. We understand all these details. We're not, we are not stepping on those. We're just trying to help in any way that police and fire to improve, you know, what they're doing. They're doing a great job. We want to do it better than just a great.
Sure. If there's a way I can assist in writing that, I'll help you.
So this is all in my mind, and we'll go ahead and vote.
Let's vote and move on because we're going to discuss this in the study session anyways. Okay, all those in favor of moving this to a study session, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, let's do a roll call. Councilman Muscat?
Yes.
Councilman Coniston?
No.
Councilman Abdullah?
No.
Councilman Baydun?
Yes.
Councilman Abdellah?
Yes.
Councilman Wenzel?
Yes.
Melonowski Maxwell, yes. We are moving it to a study session. Okay. Next item on the agenda is ordinances and resolutions. We have Council Chairwoman Melonowski Maxwell, resolution, Allen Brothers, PLLC.
Council Chair, I'll read it to get the process started. I make a motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council adopt the resolution terminating the legal contract with Allen Brothers, PLLC, and ask administration to search for another legal firm acceptable to city council to replace them as outlined in item 11A.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Abdellah. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston?
As we know well from the last couple of years, our administration picks the city attorney, the, with the consent of council. Our city attorney picks the associate city's attorneys. This awful email, and I don't condone it at all, this came to light to me just a few weeks ago. I don't know the background. I don't know the whole scenario. I understand that there's been a lawsuit filed in federal court, but I don't think it's this council's place to, in a vacuum, just vote and say, well, we're going to recommend to the administration, because that's what it would be, to terminate the contract that the CDBG department has with Harry Calagracus, who I believe is of counsel with the Allen Brothers Law Firm. Thank you.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
Yes, you know, no one should be talked to in that manner, spoken to, spoken about, whatnot. But in all due respect to Mr. Blackwell, Mr. Blackwell did the same thing to me at a city council meeting, putting my picture up, taunting me. Okay? So this is a two-way street here. So, you know, buttons try to get, be pushed, and there's no apology from him to me. It was seen on a city council meeting with my picture because of something that happened to me a few years ago. So it's, you know, it's like the pot calling the kettle black here, and it's just not right either for someone to push someone else's buttons and then claim some sort of discrimination. I didn't feel well about it when he put my picture up on the city council, on his site. I didn't care for it at all. So, you know, what's done is done, and what Mr. Allen did or did not do, and I don't know how things went, no one should be talked to that way. But that goes both ways, sir. And so for us to do something like this, I think it'd be cutting off our nose despite our face. Council Chair.
Councilman Baydun.
Thank you so much, and I'm just going to echo a few things here. You know, I listened to the attorney speak today. I listened to, you know, some of my friends here today come out and speak, and, you know, nobody should be talked to that way, from either party, in my personal opinion. And what's happening here is it's embarrassing, and it being brought up over here in front of this council, I think internally, an investigation should happen from maybe our police department or our chief of police, or maybe we can investigate maybe emails to see really what happened. Because I don't know, you know, the depths of really what's going on here. And I don't know if that's our time and place. Maybe Corporation Miyat can speak on this a little bit to see maybe if somebody from our police department can look and see really what happened and who's potentially at fault here. Because again, kind of like Councilman Muscat, we don't know enough. I don't know enough. I know that, you know, Mr. Blackwell was discriminated against, and I hear that, you know, an attorney that we used their firm with is also being discriminated against. You know, it's more of a he said, she said. Maybe our police chief, if you can speak up on this a little bit, maybe, or if Corporation Council can speak up on it. Because you're putting us in a position right now where we could potentially be, put in the CDBG director at harms, but I also, I don't want to work with somebody if they're doing any type of discriminating way, in such a way. So I just want to know, what can we do as a body to see where we can investigate this a little bit more? Because we're being put in a position to make a vote right now by either keeping or eliminating. But there's been no internal investigation, not by myself, not by any of my colleagues here today, or by the Corporation Council or the police chief. So I'm not going to cut somebody's ties with us if we don't, if I don't know, I don't know, I don't know the details.
Can I do a study session on it?
I don't want to do this, Pichu. I want to do, I want an investigation done. And if Mr. Blackwell here was discriminated in such a way, then guess what? We don't accept it as a board. And if it didn't happen, then we're not going to cut ties. But I think an investigation needs to happen.
Councilman Abdullah?
Thank you, Council Chair.
I'm so sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I had two questions, that it was one to either the chief of police or to Corporation Council, Madam Chair.
Chief of police, go ahead. See, that's what you get for sitting so far away from the microphone.
Councilman, I appreciate what you're saying. The police department will investigate crimes that originate or somehow associate with Dearborn Heights. My understanding of what's going on has absolutely nothing to do with a criminal act within Dearborn Heights, so it's completely out of our jurisdiction to investigate. This is a civil issue and an issue for council. So if you, an investigation, and I'll defer over to Mr. Miyatki at this point, but we handle criminal acts within our city. From my understanding, from what was brought forward, there was not a criminal act that occurred that I know of within our city. This has to do between a gentleman and a law firm in another city. So the police department would have nothing to do with a civil investigation over who should do...
That would be correct.
Great, so we can't have any type of investigation. We're put in a position to make a vote on...
No, we could, we could investigate. My sense was with respect to looking into this further...
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you.
Oh, I'm sorry. My sense with respect to looking into this further was there is litigation going on and asking Mr. Allen, or actually telling Mr. Allen or Mr. Calagracus, who's the person, who's the real contact, to provide us information. Mr. Blackwell has made a number of allegations. Mr. Allen has made a number of allegations. I think they're going to be going back and forth about those allegations, and that's one of the best ways for us to obtain information to the degree we need it. So, I mean, I could end up, you know, doing a further, more in-depth investigation. My personal feeling is I don't know that that's, I mean, if the council would feel that that would be an inappropriate use of my time and city resources, but if that was the sense of this body, then I would follow up accordingly.
Well, I understand, I want to know the truth. I mean, so if that means, you know, depending if we're staying with the law firm or if we're not, how much are we paying this law firm, by the way?
We're paying them the standard hourly rate of $140 per hour. They came in as just $20 higher than the other proposal, but they have tons of relevant experience with respect to the stuff they're doing with the grants and with the CDBG. I mean, you know, really, they're, they were, in my view, clearly the most qualified and lowest bidder. And they're not, it's not like they're charging something that's excessive by any means. Again, $140 per hour, our standard corp council hourly rate.
Well, I will say to Mr. Blackwell that I'm sorry that this happened to you and to the Allen Brothers, and from what's happening here, I'm sorry if this happened to Mr. Allen. I don't know the truth on this. It's very hard for me to go out and make a vote on this. I don't think anybody should be discriminated on either side. Again, this is also not a, like the chief of police said, this is not a Dearborn Heights City Council thing, but I will publicly say, if this did happen to Mr. Blackwell, I would not support working with the Allen Brothers. And if Mr. Blackwell did this to the Allen Brothers, I also don't want to see myself cutting ties with the Allen Brothers if they're also a reputable law firm, from what the other attorneys have spoken earlier. So I just, me personally, I want to know more information before going ahead and either shutting this and putting this on. And with respect to our council chair, I wish I would have had more information on this. I know you sent a few emails.
Councilman, I did provide you with the exact emails that were printed.
And I, I read this on the Detroit Free Press, but I...
I did print, I did provide you with the court case, and all the information is in there.
And this is still in litigation right now, correct? And this is still in litigation right now, correct?
Yeah, but it's timed line as to, the emails are real. Those things are not disputed at all, so we know that's a fact, and it's in here, and everything was stated. That's why I wanted you to read that, to understand it before you got here.
Great, so I just want to make sure that we can, and I don't wanna vote this down, actually. I even keep in the tabling this to my colleagues.
You wanna, you wanna table it to the next meeting and do a study session before?
I mean, a study session doesn't give me enough answers, though. I want to see what's happening.
Well, if you read all this, you will get your answers.
I did, I glimpsed through that, Madam Council Chair.
Obviously didn't read it all, but it's, you know, that's why I provided you with the agreement.
I did, Council Chair, I did, I read it all.
There's been filed.
I've got Councilman Abdullah.
Thank you, Council Chair. So in regards to your, the resolution from you, Council Chair Denise Malanowski, there were some things in the resolution that I agreed with, and there were some things in the resolution that I think we should definitely put on hold. And I'm gonna tell you where I'm going with this. The first thing, I'll, I'll read a couple of these lines, which are very important that we, we say them. The first one says, whereas the city of Dearborn Heights is responsible for selecting contracts for city services and holding those contractors to standards of work, quality, and ethical behavior. Very important, I agree with that. Whereas Dearborn Heights strives to be a community that welcomes neighbors of all races, ethnicities, religions, and disability status, and the city council's actions should embrace those goals. I totally agree with that. And I tell you, as a minority myself, no discrimination is okay with me, so I, I totally agree with that. And I felt it myself, so I know what that feels like. Not from this particular case for, towards myself, but in my life. And then the next one, whereas the city of Dearborn Heights City Council condemns the email communications by attorney James Allen directed to Charles Blackwell on account of his disability status that were used to intimidate, belittle, and hurt Mr. Blackwell. Again, on this one, I totally agree. Any type of comments or statements or emails or anything that goes towards anybody belittling them or making any type of derogatory or discriminatory comments towards anybody is not okay in my book. And, and I've heard, and I made a lot of calls, I made a lot of calls trying to understand what's going on. I don't know, just for full disclosure, I don't know Mr. Jim Allen. I, I don't know him whatsoever. I don't ever remember ever meeting him, as a matter of fact. But I did read up on this, I did search a lot of stuff online about this, I did call a, a few attorneys that I know to ask, you know, just what they know about this thing. And at this particular point, I don't believe in my particular case, I am ready to be the judge and jury and say, you know what, we're gonna cancel this particular law firm just based on one proposal. At the same time, though, however, I still think we need to make a decision eventually on this. With a federal case still coming up, there is a federal case right now, and I read it, and I thank you for sending that to me. And I read it, okay? Let's let the judges and, and our system decide what is going on with this thing before we make our decision. So therefore, with that being the case, what I think would be a better thing to do would be for us to put this thing on hold, and I don't know when the lawsuit is gonna happen, and I don't know when it's gonna end. But if somebody can give us an idea, then we'll put this thing on hold at this particular point until such time, hypothetically 90 days. At the same time, we'll put the firm on notice. And I heard it on the news, the apology. Was it a great apology, honestly? No. With due respect to a lot of attorneys, obviously we all know, they could put just the right words together, okay? So with that being the case, it was kind of a PC apology. Now, I want an apology like I would apologize to my mom if I did something wrong. That's, that is to me an apology. So with due respect to Mr. Jim Allen, I would like to have a much stronger apology. I've also heard throughout that this was meant to fish out who was sending him all these emails, and his thought process, Jim Allen's that is, was by putting something like this out, he'd be able to fish out and find out who it was that was sending him all these emails. With due respect to him again, no, that is not okay, because that doesn't make it right. So that was his strategy, I would not do it. But at the same time, there's accusations, and I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna repeat them, because it's not right for me to repeat them, and I don't want them to come out of my mouth. All kinds of accusations of things that the opposite side, in this particular case, Mr. Blackwell was putting out. So with that being the case, I don't think we should be judge and jury. There is another quick sentence I'd like to also add, that we received an email, all of us, from a resident. And I like that as a possible idea. One of the things she mentioned is to end the relationship with Allen Brothers, I've already talked about how I feel about that. But she said, end it with Allen Brothers until they publicly apologize and undergo anti-abelism training by a disability-led organization. That should be one of our criteria, no matter what we, what we do with this. But I still think we should wait at least 90 days to see how the courts play this thing out. But with that being the case, Mr. Blackwell, I am sorry that you had to go through this, and I understand whenever there's hurtful words thrown at anybody, no matter who they are, it, it is not a good feeling, and I'm sorry you had to go through that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Abdul Haak.
Thank you. I just wanna share with the audience and Mr. Blackwell, Blackwell. I wanna share some little story with everybody and Mr. Charles. I have a business in Dearborn. I used to be very outspoken against the mayor of Dearborn. And every time I went file the FOIA or spoke against the mayor, my 11 windows in my store were shattered next day, 11 times. To find out after his death in 2006, two police officers from Dearborn Police Force are the ones who were to please the mayor, trashing my store with paintballs every Christmas and shattering my windows every time I spoke on the city council. And I used to be called Mr. Charles. They called me nickname Mr. FOIA because I filed hundreds and hundreds in FOIA and spent thousands and thousands of dollars. And I took the city of Dearborn Heights and beat them in the Supreme Court of the State of Michigan twice because of FOIA. I feel your pain, and I condemn in the strongest words what my friend Jim Allen did. I know him and his dad and his family for the last 20 years. I never knew him to say things like that. But there is petition you filed with the Attorney Grievance Commission. Normally, from what I know, within 30 days, they investigate and they give you an answer. I don't know if that standard still stands or not. I would really recommend that we wait the 30 days or more and we bring this back. If the Attorney Grievance Commission found him in misconduct, I highly recommend that we terminate our business with him. If not, we should keep him because he has an excellent experience in this kind of work.
Okay, this time, do we want to amend our motion to table it for 30 days? Who made the motion?
Councilman Abdullah.
Councilman Abdullah, would you like to?
Well, I don't mind amending it, but I think it should, okay, and I see Councilman Abdul Haak, okay, maybe we reassess, because again, there is a federal lawsuit, and that's who's gonna be deciding where this thing is gonna go. I don't know when that is.
But the grievance will come through quicker.
Okay, but you wanna base it just on the grievance, or you wanna base it on the grievance and the lawsuit?
Attorney grievance will decide really, because they are nine people on that commission, and they are, some of them are chosen by the governor, some are chosen by their colleagues. I would think we take their decision above anything else, because the federal lawsuit might take two, three years.
Yeah.
Okay, but at the same time, but at the same time, let's clarify here. Do we wanna tie ourselves to decide this just based on their decision, or are we gonna just revisit that at that point?
We have to revisit this with anything new comes up. But mainly, let's see what the Attorney Grievance Commission says, and we go from there.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Okay, thank you.
So go ahead and amend that.
All right. All right, Council Chair.
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to amend my motion in regards to 11A to table it at this particular point for 30 days from today, and then come, or more, because it depends on when the next city council meeting will be around then, to come back and revisit that as a council.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Bedun.
Madam Clerk, does that verbiage suffice, or do you want me to add anything? We're good?
Okay, thank you. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, let's take a roll call. Councilman Muscat?
No.
Councilman Conston?
Yes.
Councilman Abdullah?
Yes.
Councilman Bedun?
Yes.
Councilman Abdul Haak?
Yes.
Councilman Wensel?
Yes.
Malanowski?
Yes.
Okay, it passes. Next item is Mayor Bazey, Wayne County Annual 2022 Permit Package and Performance Resolution.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I moved the, dirt, uh, I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the Wayne County Annual 2022 Permit Package and Performance Resolution for annual maintenance, pavement restoration, and special events to be performed on Wayne County right, road right-of-way in our jurisdiction during 2022. In addition, authorize Robert Conrad, Public Works Director, to sign the documents on behalf of the city as outlined in 11B.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Abdul Haak. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have comments from council members.
Council Chair.
Councilman Bedun.
I, I just got a few things here to say. First and foremost, in case I did not, Mr. Blackwell, I'm sorry that this happened to you, I'm sorry that these comments were being said. I condemn all those type of talking, and that's not acceptable to anybody. Secondly, I also wanna kinda just give my prayers and love to Mr., Mr. Bedun and the family. I know who works for the city, he just lost his brother, Mr. Ali Bedun's brother, Hajna Zeh Bedun, so, you know, I just wanna give my love and support to him and Rick Watlin and their team. And I know Councilman Muscat recently has been going through some things, and so my, my heart is with you and your family, and my prayers are with you guys.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very kindly, sir.
Sincerely. Just a few things that I know I kinda focused on at the last meeting that I'm just gonna continue to reiterate. There's a lot of these trees in our neighborhood and our community that are dead and that are falling. You know, as I walk through the south end of Dearborn Heights, I want you to know, it's upsetting, upsetting because it's really is so beautiful, but when you walk and you see these branches, I kid you not, there was a branch, massive branch, and all I had to do was tug down, and it's falling. And if the wind were like it was today, had I not pulled that branch down, it was gonna hit, and, you know, it could've injured anybody. So I really, I'm asking this administration to please, you know, when, when the time is right, to figure out what we're gonna do with a lot of these dead trees, especially because they're on city easements, and it's dangerous. I had somebody recently send me a picture of their mother-in-law running after their grandchild, and because of the roots of the tree lifted the sidewalk, she tripped, and her whole entire face was bruised. You know, I, I, again, I apologize to the resident and I apologize to the mother-in-law, but this is something that we really need to really focus on. I think Ali Deeb is doing a phenomenal job, but this is something that we really need to consider. The trees is something that I'm gonna continue to, to question and bring up at every single council meeting. Secondly, I know some of the council members, like myself, received a letter to their personal home about what's happening with the, with the, you know, the garbage bid. I want you to know, me personally, I thought it was only me at first, but I received something, you know, bashing another garbage company. You know, I, I thought it was just pointless to kinda just strong-arm another company. At the end of the day, I wanna look at all the facts. I don't think anybody should've mailed anything to our home, I mean, at least I received one, and some of, some of the council members have as well. You know, you know, I'm at my house, it's me, my wife, my son, my dog. I don't, I don't wanna get city council things there. Send it to my P.O. box or send it to my city mailbox. There was no need for anything to be mailed there. I thought that was, you know, and I've, I've received some phone calls, you know, for, for being outspoken on what's happening with GFL. And look, had GFL not failed us, I wouldn't have been outspoken. And with that said, Madam Chair, I know it's election season coming up, the following Tuesday. I know Madam Chair is sitting over here, Lynn Sinia, who's doing a phenomenal job. I wish you and your staff, Dana, all you guys, Kathy, a wonderful job, and I'm wishing the best for all the candidates. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Abdullah.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two things. Number one, just highly, highly, highly recommend to all the residents to just go out and vote. Doesn't matter who you vote for, but this is a right that we all have in this great country that we should not take for granted. And sadly, as Madam Clerk can tell us, the percentage of people that go out and vote is just way too low, not just here, nationwide. So please, please, please go out and vote this coming Tuesday, or you can go out and vote absentee, and register for absentee at the clerk's office. With that being the case, in addition to that, my dad highly, highly went and sought some services at the clerk's office, and they gave him just absolutely great service, without knowing that he was my dad. But he came back and told me about how great their customer service was, so I was not surprised. So I, kudos to you ladies in that office. We are so blessed in Dearborn Heights, you guys have no idea, to have the best clerk's office in the nation, period. The, the other thing is, we are continuing to have problems, as a lot of you guys know, with the current garbage collector. And I'd like to get an update from our mayor as far as where that's going, as far as the bids that have come in, as far as what we're planning on doing. I've spoken with Lee Gavin multiple times about different complaints on different garbage that has or has not been picked, well, has not been picked up. And he's done a great job trying to help us and the residents, but this is continuing to be a problem, and they unfortunately, I don't wanna use the words that that's our strategy, but it could conceivably have been one of our strategies to scare them into, hey, get the job done, maybe we'll keep you guys. But unfortunately, we're still in the same spot we were at three months ago, or two months ago, or four months ago. And I know it's not your fault, Mr. Mayor, so if you don't mind giving us an update as far as where we're at, as far as possibly finding a new garbage collecting company. Thank you.
Council Chair, do you want me to talk now?
Go ahead.
I actually have other items I wanted to discuss as well. Just talk about the other items?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So I guess we'll address the first one with the garbage, garbage pickup. We did have about a week or so back, all the companies that actually bid on, on the garbage collection, they all came, we opened all the envelopes, and we looked at the bids. There was one good potential company, and, and I apologize, Councilman Bedun, you brought this to my attention, this company that actually sent you, or somebody sent you an email or a mail.
It was a mail.
Bashing one particular company that was actually the company that came in with the best quote. And I'm kinda disappointed because I've heard that from another city councilman, not from Dearborn Heights, that same, same strategy was used at another city. Well, I can tell you right now, Priority came in the lowest, and both five years and a 10-year contract, so.
I'm sorry, eight years?
Yeah, five and eight year, I'm sorry. Five and eight year contract, so they came in the lowest. So my administration will be preparing something at the next council meeting for the council to, to vote on. And we're doing a lot of checking with other municipalities with that particular company to check about their customer service. And unfortunately, that was very bad taste, actually, Councilman Zuhair Abdul Haak brought this to my attention also. He actually brought me a copy, which is kinda stupid, excuse my language, but I've never actually seen anything like it, that a company would actually send something like that, you know, bashing a company that, that came in the lowest bid. And I can tell you, at the meeting, when we opened all the bid sheets, there was the companies that made the bids, and also it was myself, my chief of staff, emergency manager and Mr. Conrad, there was nobody else in that meeting. So I don't know who came up with this, but I can assure you, probably from one of the companies that was on the bid sheet. And with that, we will be choosing something here shortly, and we'll put on an agenda for you guys to approve or disapprove. Just give me another week or so, I'll put on an agenda for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Council Chair.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. So the other thing is, this, last, past Saturday, we had, we had a meeting with Wayne County Executive and his staff, and also city officials from Dearborn Heights, and also contractor that came into the E-course Creek. So that was the initial cleanup day. So we pulled a lot of stuff from the E-course Creek, and that was, we wanted to find out really how much work that needs to be done to the E-course Creek. We pulled actually five shopping carts, including, I mean, all the logs, and there was a scooter. Actually, Mr. Conrad told me today, there was a scooter that was pulled out of, out of the E-course Creek, and there's actually many, many other items there still. So we, we do have a plan, early spring, a big initiative to go and tackle some of the things in the E-course Creek and bring in, you know, more, more trucks and possibly, you know, suck out the soot that is actually coming out, you know, that, that drains going into the E-course Creek, because some of them already have full or even to the top, so a lot of water's not going into the creek. So we are working on that, and Mr. Deeb is, is looking at that, he's assessing the, the situation with, with the E-course Creek. And that's one of the reasons that we, we wanna accelerate purchasing homes off the E-course Creek. the reasons that we, we want to accelerate purchasing homes off the E Course Creek. A couple of the streets that rated high, you know, flood areas, to tear down those homes. You know, we actually had a meeting today with FEMA, and we're talking about a lot of grants that are available, that we can purchase homes and demolish them, and possibly using the area for a retention base in some of the homes. So, I hope that's okay?
Yeah, well, I commend you for something, for keeping E Course Creek at the front lines of things that our city's got to continue to look at, because, again, this has been way on the back burner for a long time, and I commend you for continuing to be. And then also, I commend the fact that our city has a good working relationship with Wayne County, because as you know, in the past, sometimes there was a little bit of a rocky relationship. I don't know if I should say this publicly, but I'm glad we're in the right direction.
Well, Mr. Warren Evans, the Warren County Executive, was, was there on Saturday with Congresswoman Rashida Tlaib, and they committed on working together with the city of Dearborn Heights. And I want to commend some of my staff that were there. You know, DPW were there, Mr. Conrad, Mr. Blackburn, Mr. Ali Deeb. They all got down and dirty in the creek trying to get a lot of the stuff, so they, Mr. Conrad, his wife actually showed up as well, and she was, she was dragging huge branches to the augers. So, thank you for taking the time out of your schedule on Saturday with that, to help us out. Thank you.
Thank you.
And also...
Councilman Abdul Haq?
We need, we need the county's help, like no tomorrow on this, and the state's, and the federal government's help, because as a lot of residents may or may not know, us as a city just don't have enough funds to be able to take care of that problem. So, I'm glad there's a good working relationship trying to solve this problem. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Abdul Haq?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank you, Mayor. I want to thank you, Mayor, for what you're doing.
He's busy.
Hello. I want to thank the mayor, yes, Hassan, I will say it again, for what you're doing, and the good relation with Wayne County. That is great, and I hope it continues like that. In last meeting, we were promised that we will have the forensic auditors here, and I don't see anybody here today. So, I don't know why, and lots of residents have been asking me specifically, what did we find? Did we find anything? Do you know anything you'd like to share with us and with the residents, Mr. Mayor?
Well, I thought the council was going to put on an agenda, so I was waiting, since I don't, the mayor does not control the council agenda.
Okay.
So, you guys put on an agenda.
Thank you.
But one thing I want to tell you, that it has to be a Zoom. The auditor will not come in, in person, wants to do Zoom. So, if we do schedule for them to go over some of the findings, you know, please schedule a Zoom meeting with them, because he will not do an in-person meeting.
Madam Chair, I move to bring the, to authorize you to talk to the auditors, to bring them...
It's not my job.
It's not your job.
I have an important job.
Councilman, I just put on an agenda. I will bring him. He's, he's ready to come to a Zoom meeting, so you guys schedule the meeting, and I will make sure he comes there. Since you guys control the agenda.
Okay.
Put on an agenda, and I will make sure that he's present via Zoom.
Okay. I, I will send you, you know, the problem is, Mr. Mayor, this could be my last meeting of city council, because my term ends the 2nd of November, and if I don't win the election, I will be out. So, that's why I put some of those items, which I considered them of importance to me and to the residents, on this agenda, so I, I have a chance to talk about them, and to present my way and my case to the resident, to the public. That's the reason, because the 2nd of November, if I don't win the election, I am out. And that is the reason all these things were brought in today. And I would like to suggest, since I don't believe the lowest bidder is the best, that you put the bond of half a million dollars on any company we're going to choose to pick up the trash, that we can use anytime they are not in compliance, and they don't do their job, we can use that money immediately to hire other companies to do that job for them, and we pay from that bond.
That's a good idea.
I would like that to be entertained in any agreement with any company you choose.
Okay.
The last thing I want to say, I really want to thank my colleagues. It was a pleasure, nine months working with you. I might have differences with some of you, but I always consider you personally friends, no matter what exchange happened between you and I. And to the heads of the departments, you made my job a lot easier, because every time, really, I called you, you went out of way to answer my question, each and every one of you, without exception. So, thank you for everything you're doing for our residents. And to the clerk, you've always been a good friend of mine, and you've always been there when I needed any information, any contract, anything. And to Dana and everybody in your office, you guys are a blessing in the city. Thank you for everything you do. And Mayor, I consider you a very, very close friend, and I supported you from day one I met you. And I wish you good luck in your job, and anything you need, whether I am on the council or outside, you have my full attention, and anything you need, any help, I am willing to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council Chair?
Oh. Councilman Muscat? Councilman Muscat, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Council Chair. I just want to say, you know, years ago, what brought me to city council was blight. And blight is what's going to keep me here until we see a massive cleanup in this city. It's, you know, things have got to change somewhere along the line, and it starts with the residents. It really isn't the city's fault. It starts with us, the homeowners. And if we, as homeowners, don't take pride in where we live, then we have nothing. We have nothing. I see, you know, lately, it's my wife that, now that's doing it, since I've been kind of down and out with my shoulder. She's going down the street and cleaning off the leaves off the storm drains, so the water can drain. And then, you know, there was a time that she told me I was a kook, sitting out there with an umbrella and a shovel, cleaning off the grates in the, in the, in the streets. But now, she's doing it. And, you know, and I hear the voices of the people complaining about the speeders, and the drag racing, and stop signs. You know, might as well just take all the stop signs in the city down, because it seems like nobody even cares about them anymore. And what I want to bring back one more time, is I brought it forward a few years ago, about having some sort of traffic control device out in front of Crestwood High School. I don't care if we put some sort of, we, you know, Beach Daily belongs to us at that point. Right on our school zone, slow down, put some sort of light there that's flashing, so kids can cross the street instead of having to walk all the way down to Beach, to Ford Road, or all the way down to Wilson, to cross the road. You know, we have some autistic kids in the neighborhood that cross that street. And, and I watched these cars flying down Beach Daily, and I said, my God, somebody's going to get killed. And at one point, someone said, well, that's a big cost to the city. My contention is, what's the cost of one life? I mean, we need to go back and look, look at that again, and help some of these people who have children that cross, cross the street, that don't get bust, or, you know, parents don't think they need to drive their kids. I mean, they just live right across the street. So, I'd like for us to look at that one more time, if we possibly can.
I fully support that, Councilman. Good idea.
Yeah. And, and residents, let's take it upon ourselves. Let's, you know, put the trash cans where they belong. I watch the street sweeper going in and out, trying to clean the street. You can't clean the street because the trash cans are in the wrong spot. People leave their trash cans out to the day before the trash comes, pick up the next following week. I just don't know what to say to these people. I don't know if I should knock on their door and say, hey, move your trash can. But let's have a little pride in where we live. It starts with us. You know, we only have so many people that work in DPW, and so many people work in ordinance. And I'm glad to see, as I was going through the packet today, of the court cases that ordinance has going forward to the courts now. They're doing a good job with the tools that we've given them, and the manpower that they don't really have. And the work that DPW does, with their being shorthanded, is just outstanding. And, and of course, our police department and fire department are second to none. Fire department, thank you for helping me, my mom, my mother-in-law, and the police that are out there on guard 24-hour a day, seven days a week. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Badun wants to say two words, and he promised to keep it to two words.
I just want, I just want everybody, just hang on a quick second. Happy Halloween. Everybody be safe this weekend. Go to all the trick-or-treats and trunk-or-treats, and remember this weekend, on Saturday, go green.
Huh?
Go green.
Councilman Wenzel?
Go green.
I think you fell on your head or something.
Go blue.
Councilman Wenzel?
You know, like Councilman Muscat was saying about the blight issue, I was asked recently by a local newspaper about my opinion on a couple of things. In Dearborn Heights, our ordinance department can write a ticket for tall grass, and in two weeks, send a contractor out there to cut it and charge the homeowner. Why can't we do that with a blight? Why, why do we have to wait months, and sometimes six months or a year, to solve a blight issue? We have to give our ordinance department the power to send a contractor in there to clean up blight in a reasonable amount of time, within like a couple of weeks or a month. And another thing he mentioned was a stop sign at Crestwood. That's another reason why, on the Public Safety Commission, we want to include school district officials, because we're all part of the same city, even though we have no jurisdiction over the school districts. They're in our, they're in our city, and we have, we have to work together. And I want to know that I don't condone any of the language in the emails in item 11A. No one should be, should be subject to such, such comments. And to wait for a court decision on making our decision, I think we should have our own standards, and be, have higher standards for the residents of Dearborn Heights, and not wait on someone, a court decision. This is our city. It's our decisions. That's someone else's. And we shouldn't let them dictate what we do. And as far as the clerk goes, it's election time coming up, and the clerk's office is doing a great job. And obviously, with this election, you'll, you'll know how fast we get the results, almost immediately. And one thing that you don't know is, us council people up here, we read these motions, these, we'd say these fancy motions that we, we present for each one of these, and that's not us talking. That's the clerk's office. They write these motions for us to read. It's not us, it's them. So, they're the ones that deserve the credit for that. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, I'm sure you have something to say.
Yeah, there's an election coming next Tuesday, November 2nd. I would like to let you know that the clerk's office will be open this Friday for election business only, from 9:00 to 4:00, and Saturday, from 8:00 to 4:00. So, come and see us. We'd love to issue, we've issued over 5,000 absentee ballots right now. About, just under 60% have been returned. But just to let you know, last November, we issued 16,000. Okay, so there is a big, obviously, it's a local election, but it's just as important, and maybe more important. Okay, so come and see us. We will be there. As far as those have, that have absentee ballots at home, fill them out. The quicker you get into us, the better. I don't know if I would put them in the mail, being, being it's closer to the election right now. We do have a drop box down at the JFK Junior Library. We have one at the end of the walkway at City Hall, as well as we have one connected right to the building. So, any of those are open 24/7. We'd love to zap some more in before Election Day. And then, thank you for all the, the comments about the clerk's office. We have a phenomenal staff. Although you only see four of us in the office, there's a pit crew that, that is seasonal, that comes in prior to each election, as well as thereafter, that sits in the, not sits in the back, works in the back, and, and gets all this stuff, everything ready for the election. They process and keep track of the absentee ballots. They get the, you know, test the equipment for us if we need them to test the equipment. They do just, just about anything that we need them to do. As well as, the deputy clerk and I just finished last night, training all of our poll workers, and those, we have probably about 150 that work just that day, between the polls and the absentee counting board. We also have a wonderful working relationship with Crestwood's National Honor Society, where we have a student at each one of the precincts that helps with us that aren't so tech savvy. We are, but, you know, they were born. These kids were born with computers. So, we love that relationship, as well as all of our, all of our staff. So, I do want to let you know a couple more things. We do have sample ballots that you can visit our website. It'll tell you the positions that are on there, as well as the, you know, the actual sample ballots. If you have any questions, even though this is a local election, there are some things on the election that might not be so clear. There's partial terms, there's full terms. There's right, there, there may be writing candidates for, for positions. So, give us a call, 313-791-3430, and we can help you out with any questions you might have. And, oh, two more things. If you want to know any more about the candidates, you can visit the League of Women Voters website, nonpartisan. It's vote411.org. And if you have been issued an absentee ballot and want to, you can track it online. You would visit michigan.gov/vote. You would know when the ballot was issued to you, as well as whether or not we have received it. And we receive the ballots daily, as far as zapping them in. So, you know exactly that we receive them. They don't get counted until Election Day at the AV Counting Board. And get out and vote.
Okay. Last but not least, just Councilman Coniston, and then we will move out to the public.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Regarding the loud mufflers, the speeders, in our many residential areas, I know our police force is out ticketing as much as they can in the neighborhoods, and we're not the only city. Dearborn has a terrible problem, especially on Ford Road. But really, before someone is killed, people really need to slow down. I too think that the tree ordinance that was originally authored by one, one of our councilmen needs to be redrafted. And if somebody has a large tree on the city property, on the tree lawn, if they want to cut it down, they should be able to cut it down. And I have a draft of an ordinance that I'll circulate to everybody. I too want to say what a great job the clerk's office is doing. They were there late last night, and I probably interrupted them, and I'm sorry, but...
No, that's all right.
They're, they're working 14-hour days. I too share the outrage of the comments that were directed towards Mr. Blackwell. I have yet to understand the full context. I've known attorney James P. Allen for over 20 years, and I was very surprised to find out, he would have been the author of those comments. And I, it shouldn't go unnoticed, but I think we have to know the full context. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. At this time, I will open it up to community comments, and then it will be public comment.
My favorite community comment coming up.
Yep.
Radio announcer.
Hello, Council Chair and Mayor. First off, this Saturday on October 30th, at Carolyn Candy Library, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m., we will be doing a trunk-or-treat and haunted mini golf event. We will have two nine-hole courses at CK, raffle prizes, a book giveaway, treats, and more for everyone. The library will be taking donations for Goodfellas for the event, so have fun, and make sure no child gets left behind. If you want to sponsor a trunk or donate, please leave a message via Facebook, or, or call 313-791-3800, and leave a callback number, and we will return your call. Also, wanted to give thanks to some of our trunkers and donors, Rachel Point, Mo Badun, the Dearborn Heights Firefighters, Raiders Football, the Community and Cultural the Dearborn Heights Firefighters, Raiders Football, the Community and Cultural Relations Commission, the Friends of the Library, CNS Healthcare, and other community members for doing trunks or sponsoring the mini-golf event. I also want to thank the police department and Building Maintenance for their assistance. They gave us a lot of, so... Next, I wanted to talk about an upcoming technology program at JFK Library. Saturday, November 20th, at 1:00 PM, there will be a program on the future of robotics. There's going to be a robotic dog. I don't know if anyone's seen the video with robotic dog dancing with the band, but there's going to be a robotic dog similar to that. A drone demonstration and a presentation on our 3D printer that was donated by IEEE. Please call 313-791-60504, reservations. So thanks for your time, and see you at the library.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. I just wanted to once again remind everybody that we do have a FEMA grant in process. Today, the meeting that we had with Mr. Jamal, as well as the Michigan State Police, was the next step in our process for this grant. The first one that we're going to need to finish is the home purchasing that we're doing along the Hanover Street and Courier Street of the Ecorse Creek. So I just want to remind everybody that if you know someone that's been affected by the creek and lives right adjacent to it, to please contact the mayor's office. If they need a physical form, we have some in City Hall, or we can gladly mail it to them, so that they can fill it out, and we can put them on our application for this grant. So just a quick reminder on that again. We should be done with the application by next month, so time is running.
Thank you. Next.
Okay, I'm going to do the announcements portion now, Nancy Brier. And the two that I have, one starts tomorrow evening, and we've already talked about the lovely work that was done on behalf of the Ecorse Creek on Saturday. I'd like to thank everybody and let you know that the public is welcome to the second meeting of the Ecorse Creek Commission from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at 333 South Beach Daily. And this is a new commission. We're working very hard with the mayor and Mr. Ali Deep, and quite a few of the people that are involved in this. So if you have any concerns, questions, want to hear more, or the latest, please come to our meetings, and you'll be right up with it.
When is that meeting? When is that meeting?
It's tomorrow night. It's going to be the fourth Wednesday of the month, from 6:00 to 8:00, so it's the 27th, which is tomorrow.
333 South Beach Daily?
Triple three five, South Beach Daily. Three 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 five.
It's posted on our website, too, under legal...
It is posted on the website, so this is kind of a friendly reminder. And then, if tomorrow isn't enough for you with the creek, on Thursday evening, we have another meeting opportunity at the same address from 7:00 to 8:30 with the South Dearborn Heights Civic Association. We will have Mr. Kanesic, David Kanesic, speak on what's happening with the county, and hopefully, we can ask him for more money for our creek. So please be there, too, to, to witness that. And we have our favorite librarian will be there, because we'll also be talking about, yes, Mr. McCaffrey. And we will be talking about things in Dearborn Heights, historical sites, how things happened, and a little bit of a history, Dearborn Heights and the surrounding area. That meeting is 7:00 to 8:30. So you have at least two opportunities this week to come and see us at that same location. Thank you.
Thank you. Now it is public comment. Time limit is three minutes. And sir, after her, I'm going to have you go, because you've been coming to too many meetings, and you leave because it gets too late. So I know, yeah. Rose Tripepe, Tulane Street, Dearborn Heights. Please get rid of the garbage, GFL. I put mine, right in my driveway, and I find them in my neighbor's front lawn, and I'm just tired of it. This might not be the proper place, but since March the 15th, I have tried to get a meeting with Mayor Bazey. Never happened. And it's just getting worse and worse and worse. I asked to meet you, I'm sorry, I asked to meet him, I end up with Denise, Kim Constance. I don't want to talk to them. They cannot help me. I need the mayor's help. The Eaton Center needs you there. We got a letter that the guy, they're fixing the bathrooms. Well, it's been, what, two months now? There's not even one done. What is going on? We're losing people? They're all quitting? We have a new girl in, wonderful girl, in fact, she's here tonight, Katie. But we need people there. We need workers, and we don't have them. And I asked you in the last email, do I need to set up the meeting, or does the mayor need to set it up? Whichever way it has to go, let's get it done, because it's getting ridiculous out there. Thank you, and have a good night. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, sir.
Council Chair, a response to this, please.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
Uh, well, hang on a second, Mr. Mayor, please. You know, we were talking about getting, you know, a new trash pickup company, and I'm hoping that we get to, you know, to speak with these companies before we vote on who's going to pick up the trash. You know, we went through this debacle a few years back with GFL, and we were almost forced to pick one company. I don't want to have to go through that again. I mean, it made, you know, we voted no, 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 yes, yeah, and it come down like five or six times before somebody just finally gave it and said yes. I want to be able to talk to these people.
Maybe we should have a study session for that.
I believe that, you know, we need to bring all the pertinent people and the companies in and, and, and talk to them, because I, I understand Mr. Tripepe's problem. I watched him pick up my can and drive it to my neighbor's house. You know, maybe for somebody like me, it won't be spill bad walking on there, but you got people that aren't, you know, able to walk far, or, or, you know, carry that big can any further than what they have to. And I believe Mr. Mayor has something to say about the meeting that was requested?
Oh, for the, okay, so there's, there's a lot of mix-up here with what was said. Initially, when Mr. Tripepe asked for a meeting, it was, it was a legal issue. And that's when I wanted to actually discuss this with Mr. Miyake. It was an issue, and there was a, I don't want to say too much over here, but it was something about legality that could put the city at, at, I guess, a risk for lawsuit. And that's one of the reasons why I actually wanted Mr. Miyake to be involved, you know, with, with that meeting. So after that, I know we discussed that, and again, we want to discuss all the pertaining to that one meeting that you requested. And, you know, you asked the same question when, during endorsement hearing with the UIW, I had told you the same thing. So with the meeting that you guys set up at the Eaton, I was not aware of a meeting. You guys set it up, and nobody told me that there was a meeting, till I found out from a couple of people in this room, other than you. They told me there's a meeting at, at the Eaton Center, and it was the same time we're having meetings with, I can't remember, with either with the state or the county. And the Eaton, there's, there's already work being done. I know there's contractors over there, and I know my, my director is doing an amazing job, Kim Constance, at the Eaton Center, both, you know, at the Eaton and also the Berwin. So I don't know what the issue is with that, you know, with the work. I know there's work being done right now. So the other thing with staffing, you know, we do have, you know, we interviewed, you know, several, several people for, for the positions, and I know we're in the process of going through that process with the hiring. So we are looking at that, and I know we just brought in not too long ago with a deputy director to the Parks and Rec. So I don't know what the concern is. You know, we are working on the Eaton Center, and also, we are looking to hire people. We interviewed, they've done the testing, so we're in the process of that as well.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, sir. You have three minutes, your name, please.
Sure. My name is Larry Henny. I live in Hickory Bridge in Dearborn Heights. A couple of years ago, I ran for city council. I got beat like a drum, and that, and that was fine.
Sorry about that.
But, but one of my main priorities was the, the flooding at the south end. And to me, that's probably one of the most important issues that, that the city can deal with. And I just want to thank the mayor, and I want to thank the city council for getting started on this and, and moving on it, because, because I think that's probably the most important part of, of getting things done in the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sir?
You're a good man.
Pass out a flyer.
Oh, sure.
I just want you to know, I've watched you come into the last three city council meetings. Yeah, and I...
Hey, that's my old neighbor, man. Leave him alone.
Is this your old neighbor?
Yes.
Well, he looks like a young neighbor.
Well, we go back a long way.
Across my street, 623 O'Farwood, is a very large 78 plus tree.
Thank you.
I love this. Thank you so much for coming about this. This is my kind of work.
Council Chair, if you don't mind, just for disclosure, the gentleman asked for extra time, so we'll be giving him extra time, because as we asked for, and the council chair allowed it. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Ron Frenzy, and I live on Fairwood. And my, my presentation is really timely, because all these council members are talking about cutting of trees. So I'm here to, I'm here seeking your help to cut down a hazardous tree using Dearborn Tree or some other company. Across my street at 623 O'Farwood is a very large tree, approximately 70 feet tall, and it's, and it's actually hanging over some houses. And it's about, and it's between the sidewalk and curb, so it's a city tree. And it's breaking up two sidewalk squares, shedding branches all the time, and it's leaning over two neighbors' homes and cars in their driveways, causing great risk to their family members and property. Before someone really gets hurt, please have Dearborn Tree or someone else cut down the whole tree and grind up the stump. It's a real hazard for those two homeowners. Both council members, Ray, Mr. Ray Muscat and Mr. Ray Zohair Abdalhak, have seen this tree and have deemed it hazardous, because the large branches were leaning over two adjacent houses. This is very rare, very rare, that large trees have branches over houses. Concerning the ordinance department, the ordinance department has adopted to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of residents. Ordinance ensure that Dearborn Heights continues to be clean, safe, and works to protect your investment as a homeowner. Therefore, by ordinance, this tree should be removed and the stump ground up. It poses a health hazard, it's not safe, and is against the general welfare of the residents where the tree is leaning. It is not clean, presents a situation that imperils the investment of homeowners, damage to homes and cars will far exceed the cost of the tree removal. Action as soon as possible is needed. I believe Dearborn Tree is needed, because to cut down this unusually large top branches, you need rope to lower the branches to the ground, so they will not fall on the roof of the two houses. A good trim will not do the job, because the large branches are at the very top of the tree, leaning over two houses. Thank you for your consideration. Also, this is also a protective action to hinder future property damage and personal injury. Just as the city plows the snow to prevent possible accidents, or sweeps the streets to keep them clean, or has a fire department that has inspections to prevent future fires, so too should the city give a contracted Dearborn Tree to remove this hazardous tree to stop the potential injury to residents and their property. And with the second page, you can see that the top two are the trees leaning over these two houses. This is, again, is very rare, and that's because the tree is leaning. All these sycamore trees are all leaning. And what spurred me to do this is the last tree. My tree was right across the street, and we had on August 11th, a large storm, and my tree was, looked, it looked that was alive, and it blew over to my neighbor's, on top of my neighbor's car, and it crashed right on their, their roof, their windshield, and their bumper. And they were hopping mad at me.
I, I live around a block from you. I know exactly where this tree is. I remember this, and I seen this.
There you... So, so that kind of, that kind of spurred me to come and do this, to kind of like pay penance to the, to the fellow that had so much damage to his car. So as a kicker, I have a Valpak coupon for a Dearborn Tree, and you can save $400. So my only question is, who do I give this coupon to?
Give it to Mr. Deep. He's, he's the best. And you know what, Mr. Deep? Honest to God, this is something we're talking about. We, the trees are definitely an issue. I know that tree he's talking about, and one of the issues that I, I think I brought it up to you, believe it or not. And I seen it after that big storm. I mean, the, the trees are clearly an issue. I know we are a city of trees, but there's a lot of dead trees.
You know, Council Chair, excuse me, if we're butting in, but, you know, we, we've seen these sycamore trees that are, you know, got plenty of nice green leaves on them, and then when the branch breaks off, it's hollow in the middle, they're rotten. And, and they look alive, but they're not. And they keep shedding, you know, like Councilman Baydun said, we're, we're known as the city of trees, but I know in my heart that this city, over the last 10, 15 years, has taken a backseat to taking care of the trees in this city. If you look at our trees now, the trees are sprouting branches at the bottom of the trunk. They look like bushes now instead of trees. You know, they're not been properly maintained over a period of years, and, and, you know, out of sight, out of mind. And until something happens, I saw the tree that fell on the gentleman's, neighbor's car. I mean, it was a brand spanking new car, and that would have just, I mean, I don't know what I'd have done at that point in time, but...
He was really mad at me.
Well, and, and there's no reason to be mad at you, because it's not your tree.
And me.
Okay?
It's his cousin.
You know, we, and, and we spoke to him. We, you know, you and I spoke to him along with Councilman Zohair Abdalhak.
That's right.
And, but we need to get back on a good foot of taking care of the residents and doing what the city's supposed to be doing, is taking care of the city, along with the help of the residents, taking care of their own properties. And that goes hand in hand, and I'll keep saying it over again, we start with ourselves, but we also need help from the city as far as the trees go. So I agree with you, a lot of these sycamore trees really are not alive. They're, they're, it's an accident waiting to happen. Okay? That's my, my opinion on that. I see, saw that tree, and it's very heartbreaking to see that.
Councilman Abdalhak, go ahead, please.
Thank you. I would like to recommend something to the administration and the city council. If the DPW or the ordinance, they look at the tree and they feel it is dangerous, or it is dead, or anyway, it needs to be removed, and the owner of that property is willing to pay for it, I recommend that we give them a permit to cut that tree if we decide that it, it could be cut.
Yeah, I think if a homeowner wants to be able to cut down their tree on the easement, and they pull a permit, and it's dead, and we don't have the manpower to do it, let the homeowner do it.
Or if it's overgrown and...
Or if it's overgrown.
Pop it up the sidewalk.
I've gotten this phone call from this resident for the last, how long have I been on council?
The residents need to know, too, we have limited budget, we have limited resources every year. That's how much we can do. Otherwise, we have to use money from other places, which might be more priority than the tree, which need to be removed.
I think it might be a liability issue, the resident cutting down a tree on city property, too. Yeah. Yeah, so, you know, some of these trees cost $3,000, $4,000, $5,000 to cut down.
And to correct, to correct our council members here, it's, we're not city of trees, we're a tree city.
Yes. Whatever, whatever you want to call it, tree, tree.
And Mr. Deep, I'm sure there's a device that I've seen DTE use, where you, the machine that puts against a tree and it plunks it, and see if it's solid or hollow inside? I'm sure it's something like that, we could probably check into something like that.
We all seen them trees, them giant trees that are completely hollow inside.
Okay, guys, we're getting off track. Go ahead, sir. Are you done?
So will the tree, will the city cut down this tree?
Ali Deep, can we help him out?
He'll help you.
He said he'll take the coupon as well.
Oh, so the city, the city will cut down?
He's right there, Mr. Ali Deep. He's the superstar of the city.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
You made my neighbor happy.
Councilman Abdullah's cousin.
Any other public comment? Please step up to the microphone. You, sir, you're next.
Mo Baydun's uncle.
Three minutes, and your name.
My name is James Blazadis. I live on Gertrude Street, south end, and I'd like to address an issue of north branch Ecorse Creek, or River, I should say. And everybody says a cleanup, cleanup, cleanup. That's not the problem with that, that branch. It's those old 1930s culvert bridges that are blocking the water from flowing down to the Detroit River. That, you get all the branches, they clog up on them culverts, and there in Northern Allen Park, they got the same old bridges, and it's a mess. I'm emailing to Wayne County. Every time there's a heavy rain, those culverts are blocked with branches. And I think she ran out of money for her mile, for what is through Dearborn Heights there. They got so much for per mile that they can spend a year. And, uh, recently, these past few months, she hasn't been doing much. And I don't know whose responsibility it is for, to replace those bridges, but that's the main issue of that creek. And, uh, so, is that the city, or is that the county?
That's Wayne County.
County.
Who is that?
The county and the city.
County owns the creek.
Pardon me?
The county takes care of the creek.
Yeah, but who owns the bridges?
Uh, that, I think the city owns the bridges.
They, they say it's a city.
Madam Chair?
Depends on where they-
Councilor, county?
Yeah, it was deemed a creek instead of a river, so it's under the jurisdiction of the county. We pay a lot of money every month for Wayne County to maintain the creek. And years ago, when we did the Ekor's Creek cleanup, the county would come out, they would have people there. Probably the last seven, eight years, there's been nobody there. I was there last Saturday, and we did see the county employees and a commitment that they're going to help keep the creek clean. But, so through two sections of the Ekor's Creek heading into Allen Park, the, the Ekor's Creek is forced to go through these old metal culvers, and there's no support for those bridges. Uh, uh, once the ground wears away from the erosion, those bridges are going to collapse. So with this American Rescue money that the city is getting, we really need to look at replacing those bridges. Uh, uh, those culvers are always clogged, always impede the flow of the creek.
Yeah, well, they've been saying to replace those bridges for 80 years now, 70, and 80.
They need to be updated.
And, uh, there's, there's open bridges that have been replaced that weren't great. Those culvert bridges are, there's a lot more water going into that, that river branch than there ever was. And those bridges, uh, can't handle the flow.
Those culvers can't handle the flow.
Correct.
I agree.
Okay.
So, could that be addressed somehow?
Yes, yes. We're gonna ask the, uh, city engineer and-
Yeah, you guys didn't even know who's responsible for the bridge. I'm just a resident, and I knew it was the city.
And I've got photos, a lot of photos of those culvers.
Thank you. Okay, any further public comment?
Yes, you got one more in the back, and I got Mr. Ali Deeb.
I think he wants to talk to him.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, go, go ahead. You can.
Okay, just, uh, just for the record, the, uh, the city owned the bridges. So, uh, uh, the county is responsible, the county drain commissioner is responsible for the actual drain maintenance and the upkeep. But we own the bridges. So the bridges are under a federal program for inspection and maintenance. So, um, uh, the bridges o- over the creek, uh, are currently going into their two-year cycle inspection. And I believe the last council meeting, you approved the contract, and they are currently being inspected. So the result of this inspection will give us an idea of the life expectancy, the load rating, the scour. The scour is what is, what is the technical name for the water movement and the impact on the bridge structure. We will determine the flow. We will, we will get a recommendations for improvement, whether it be minor improvement or, or planned replacement. So I haven't been with the city long enough to see what was done in the past, but I tell you going forward, we were following the bridge program, the federal program, where it would, and we will get the result, and we will implement them. So we are currently doing the two-year inspection, and we will look at the 14 bridges owned by the city, and they are ours to maintain and upkeep and replace if needs be. And there are two different kinds of bridges. The, the culverts with tube, uh, uh, flow or the open. So, again, it's not a cheap thing to, to replace, but there are a lot of things that you can do to increase the flow. So we will wait to see the result of the inspection, and we will act accordingly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Any other?
You have one more.
Councilman Abdullah?
You have one more right here.
I've got two more.
Nancy, I'm just gonna read. Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead. I'll have you do it in a minute.
Okay, that's fine.
Go ahead. All right, in, in response to what was just said, this is my three minutes for the remark, I did see the men from Wayne County there before the Saturday that we were cleaning, and they are working on the bridges, and they were checking them out. I stopped to see, thinking they were from the county and were gonna be working the weekend. But, uh, they were the bridge people there. And you could see at Pardee, at that bridge right there, where part of our problem is the silt and the mud that builds up to where nothing can get through, uh, the drains that we have established. And that's something that has to be addressed. And then back to the tree incident, uh, I have a neighbor whose tree fell a week and a half ago on Academy Street, went across the street. They were not home. That had to be taken care of. It was on the easement. There's a home over at, I believe, 26,100 Courier that has a tree that's been dead for three or four years on the easement. Our city property problem has not been addressed. And then, as we discussed at one of our neighborhood meetings with Mr. Conrad about trees, we have one of those sycamore trees over on Princess Street that is raising the street and flooding that area worse every time we have water. And then, if I've got another minute left, I just, a couple more things. I thank you all for making this meeting shorter than five hours. That's a definite plus. And I do want to address the lovely speech by Mr. Zuhair, and let him know that he is not totally finished. He is a write-in candidate for the balance of this year. And I just want to let people know- We can't campaign, I'm sorry. All right, it's, it's not a campaign speech, but I want to thank him for his. Thank you.
Greetings, how you doing?
Good. We've all been here together before. Um, Mr. Muscat, Councilman Muscat, I agree with you completely about how the city needs to, um, the citizens need to step it up a bar in regards to take care of their properties. Another thing, as far as trash goes, what the mayor said about another company, that's great, but if you're still using one of those kind of machines that dumps the baskets into the, into the garbage truck, the biggest problem is, is people aren't managing their garbage. So if there's loose papers, plastic, styrofoam, stuff like that-
It's fly all over the place.
It's blowing down everybody's street, and if you're in the way of the wind that's blowing, uh, guess what? It all ends up in your front yard. As far as the management of the, uh, basin covers and stuff like that, that's another thing neighbors in the neighborhood should pay more attention to. I think the city needs to adopt an ordinance that puts a ban on anybody mowing, whether it be residential or commercial, where their lawn clippings and stuff are going out in the street.
There is, there is an ordinance against that.
There is, this isn't Dearborn where they suck up everything. You put it out in the street, the city comes up and cleans it all up. But I see these commercial guys cutting the lawn, and they're just out there with blowers, throwing it all over the middle of the street.
There is an ordinance against that.
Somebody else's yard. I'm sick of that, to be honest with you.
We do have an ordinance against that.
Well, I'm still seeing it.
Yeah.
All right. The other thing, I was in here about, what, three months ago, I think, regarding a property, 25314 Warren Avenue. Now, I understand the landlord of this business and multiple other rental income properties in this city passed away, and I'm sorry for his family. But when we lost the mayor of our city, somebody else stepped up to the block and continued the ball rolling, whether it was the councilwoman, or now acting mayor Bazio, elected mayor, whatever, you, you're running the show. The show is still going on, is what the bottom line is. Now, I'm sorry that that family had a loss. The back of that business, it's like you book, judge a book by the cover. You look at the front of the cover, it looks nice. You look on the back, it looks nice. Well, you look at the back cover of this place, and it looks like it's been shot at and missed and pooped on and hit, because it's terrible, disgusting, it's a pigsty. And it's like, I don't know how people can even walk into that place and buy food from it because it's so disgusting. It's all mismanaged. The wall has still been done totally in up to code. The property next to that business is owned by the same group. They did their driveway, and they remodeled the front of their house, but all that stuff on that commercial business still looks like, you know what? And 30 seconds? Well, I'm glad I could voice my opinion and let you guys know that it's in, and the property on the corner, that's the new medical facility, they put up concrete pillars to border the parking lot of a party store to the new doctor office. No rerod, no reinforcement, no steel tubing. Three of the seven that they put up have already gotten knocked over from people bumping them. There's a pile of mortar this high in the backyard or in the alleyway, busted out cement.
Sir, time's up.
And on my house, on my street-
Time's up.
Three houses from my street, and I can give you the address for that one real quick-
Sir, sir, three minutes is the limit.
Because there's a pile of stuff sitting up there for three weeks now at 7434 Highview Street. There's a pile of trash on the boulevard that's been sitting there for three weeks. The current tenant moved out, and that stuff is still sitting there. And whether it's the landlord's fault or whatever, it's, is this intercity, or is this Dearborn Heights?
Thank you, thank you.
Council Chair, I want you to know that that address for the Highview trash, I've had a conversation with, uh, our director, Lee Gavin, and, uh, it, it has been out there for about three, maybe four weeks, and I've spoken with the resident who lives next door, and so I believe as Director Lee Gavin, uh, GFL has been, uh, set to come out and pick it up. I don't know why they haven't yet. I mean, we've been having an issue with GFL since mid-June or maybe even April, I think. Uh, but I agree with you, that trash there, and I know what you're talking about, about the business.
Do you want me to go down there? I have a question.
I'm sorry that you're dealing with that.
Go ahead. Councilman Abdallah?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Do you have Councilman Abdallah?
Uh, resident, uh, thank you, I just remembered, a resident called me just before I walked in here, that some gentleman, his name is Joseph, claimed that he's from the assessor's office, walked to the backyard of his house and took pictures and looked at the house. He didn't have name tag. He didn't leave a phone number or a business card or anything. Do we have anybody, we send them out to check for assessing properties in the city? His name is Joseph.
Joseph what?
Joseph, that's the name he gave the lady of the house.
I'll talk to the assessor's office.
We have to talk to the assessor.
We, yeah, we privatize our assessing, so that would be Tony Fuko's office, and I don't think he has anybody.
I understand, but they should still have a tag, name tag. They should have a business card. They can't walk to the backyard of somebody's private home and take pictures and not leaving their name or piece of paper or anything. So I'd like to bring it to the attention, please, to the mayor's management.
Thank you, okay. Is there any other further comment before we have Council Abdallah read?
One more.
Abdallah?
Okay.
Hi, my name's Chuck Zemmons. I'm on Powers Street, and the gentleman that was talking about that creek and this and that, I've lived there 25, 30 years. It's been the same thing. Nothing's getting done. Nobody's held accountable. Why? We had problems with our garbage pickup and this and that. You guys are looking into a new contractor and this and that. Well, the bucket's pushed from the city to the county, to the feds now with, uh, bridges, and hoping for some pie in the sky dream that's never gonna happen. Where's the accountability? Mr. Mudcat, Muscat said about residents need to step up this, that, the other thing. Where's the enforcement on these landlords and these rental properties where everything looks like hell?
Oh, I agree.
You just went back to, somebody owns these properties. Where's the enforcement? They don't cut their grass, they leave a mess, they leave this and that. Where's the enforcement? I understand the, the cops and the ordinance people, yeah, you can write tickets for this, that, and the other thing. Where's the collection? Where's the money? Where's the punishment? How do you stop it? That's my question to all of you.
Sir, you know, just a quick comment, if you don't mind-
Go ahead.
-to the gentleman. Uh, I have numerous emails into the ordinance department, I think Mr. Miyaki, to the legal department, of how we go about enforcing these ordinances, why it takes-
Where's the punishment?
Well, oh, hang on a second, please. Uh, you know, why does it take so long to go from point A to point B? And, and I'm of the one, if you get a ticket for not maintaining your high grass or whatnot, and I gotta come out the second time, and I don't care if it's the following year, it's an automatic ticket, and it gets cut immediately, and you get charged. That's the way I'd like to see it. But according to my understanding, the law, people have due process. Now-
Who makes the laws?
A lot of that-
This is why I am here. Who makes the law?
Hang on a second. Well, let, let, let me defer that to Corporation Counsel-
Yes.
Because I believe a lot of that has to do with the state, if I'm not mistaken.
Where's the enforcement? Where's the punishment?
So I'd like, i- i- maybe Corporation Counsel can answer some of this. Council Chair?
Yeah, I believe that Corporation Counsel is part of the enforce, is the enforcement part of it, so let's let him talk. Go ahead, Corporate Council Miyaki.
Okay, sir, specifically, what is it that, I mean, you've said a lot of things in terms of enforcement. What is your specific concern?
Number one, the Ekor's Creek. This is what's going on. This ain't, just happened the last month or two with the storms we've had. This has been going on for 20, 30 years.
Well, the Ekor's Creek is, I mean, to be frank, one of the comments that was made by Councilman Abdullah is one of the, one of the most on-point comments that's made. If you looked at the map that the county of Wayne had come up with, in terms of the assessments that would have been imposed if they were all borne by homeowners, the cost would be astronomical and very difficult for most homeowners to, to deal with. That, I believe, has been an issue all along, is the financing. Frankly, I probably still have the thing showing special assessments, because the way in which these things get taken care of, unless we get federal grant money, is assessments are made against properties, and all the properties that are closest to the creek, as well as those that are going up the whole watershed, do receive an assessment, but the assessments are the greatest closest to the creek. And that's the way it would end up being done under the Drain Code, which is actually administered through the probate court, which is very strange. But that's the way it would end up being done. So I think what has been looked at all along with respect to this is trying to get money through the federal government and through state government in order to basically deal with those costs, because otherwise, no one believes that they would end up being able to afford that. And I haven't been asked to end up actually addressing this issue before, but since you asked, and I've been told to end up answering that question, that's the answer that I would give, is that the cost would be huge. Frankly, I haven't looked at the map and, since we got the consent judgment against Wayne County, but I think that's the biggest reason why things have taken a long time.
I understand the cost being huge and this and that, but the people in that area are still getting charged for flood insurance and this and that, and they live in these plains, the basements get flooded, and there is no recourse. They're paying this money because they live in a flood plain that everybody knows about, but they still gotta kick up to the insurance company and this and that.
And ultimately-
Now, who is bought and paid for here?
And ultimately, what I think everyone is looking forward to, hopefully, is that there will be money that will end up being received from the federal government to cover a great deal of this cost, and then the flood insurance would end up being able to potentially, potentially, I wouldn't say for sure, go away. If someone else told you that it would be for sure going away, I don't know that they necessarily have an accurate assessment. But that was part of what has been looked at in terms of a way to ultimately deal with some of these issues. Get federal money and basically end up making it better, and then hopefully being able to convince the federal government that we don't need to end up having the flood insurance, which generally hasn't been very helpful to the residents anyways, because the water normally is not coming up through the top. It's usually coming up through the bottom. So that would be, I think, the clearest, most concise answer I could probably give to you on that point.
So, in conclusion, the buck gets passed.
No, in conclusion, you either make one choice or you make another choice. You either make a choice to basically end up bearing potentially thousands of dollars a year in assessments, or you try to make sure that you cannot be getting money from the feds. And if you live close to the creek, that might be a more difficult assessment to make. No one's ever asked me this question before, sir, so I thank you for allowing me to end up saying it. But I think that's the, that's, that's the underlying issue that I think has been percolating that no one has ended up necessarily addressing as clearly as I have right at this moment. Hopefully, that's helpful. Hopefully, that's helpful.
I agree with you, but that gentleman with the culverts and everything else, that's a simple thing, and you guys had a hard time determining who takes care of what. I mean, I'm sorry, but from a resident's point of view, that's kind of sad.
Well, Mr. Deeb has indicated that these, and I know that Hennessy, the engineering firm, is going to be going out there, I'm, I'm, I have to say that I'm glad Mr. Deeb is, is working for the city and allows us to have a little more of a city-focused emphasis on issues, and I think he's mindful, he's here, he'll raise these issues with Hennessy, and hopefully we can end up having more of a, more of an issue addressed with regard to that.
I personally appreciate your response and everything else. The other one was, is like the rental properties and this and that, and the ordinances, and how do you enforce them and this and that? I mean, I got junked houses in my neighborhood, you can see which one of their rental properties and who's the owner. And I mean, where's the enforcement? Are these landlords or bank owners or whoever owns them, are they paying a price?
And then I believe that, that they are, but it does take some time to be able to do that.
Is there any records of this that I could look up? I mean...
You could probably end up contacting the 20th District Court and ask them about the ordinance enforcement and X tickets, their specific type of citation.
I understand issuing of tickets, I want to see the collection part.
Yes, but they could also...
Where do they go?
They may also be able to address that, sir. I think they're the ones who keep the statistics. They're known as X tickets, they're for municipal civil infractions. They're a type of ticket that ends up getting issued. So if you have a concern, you might end up addressing it to either the court administrator, Michelle Atkins, or the deputy court administrator, Katie Shaw.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I just have a question for, I just have a question for our controller, please. Are we, you receive all the payment from the treasurer due on daily basis, and you record them in your general ledger. How are we on the collection of tickets and violations? Do you have any idea, are we where we supposed to be as we predicted in our budget?
I did not write that, I need to, I need to do it, I don't correct. I know we have the numbers right now.
If you can forward those, please, to the city council members, I do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, we, we have revenue from ordinance department, from court, from traffic.
I would like to see if we are within the budget which we predicted and forecasted for the year. Are we behind? And I would like to know why we are behind, why we're not doing this. Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Come on up.
Tanya Sterlini, South Brookside, Dearborn Heights. So I, just to piggyback off, Councilman Muscat said about people, you know, picking up after themselves, if people would just clean the drains when it's flooding, that would be very helpful. I see a lot of people posting, "The streets flooded, the street flooded." If you just clean the drain, guess what? The water goes down, it does, sometimes, not always, I get people's basements flooded, that's a bigger issue, but that is also helpful. The other thing about the ordinance, and I'm not trying to beat up the ordinance, but I've mentioned this to, to certain people, we've had a problem, house in our sub for quite some time now, ordinance has been called constantly, but we still have the problem with the house. I don't know, I don't feel the ordinance is following up, following up, because this house is a mess. If you are following up, I would think something would be done, maybe they're not getting high enough tickets, maybe we're not issuing tickets. I know a neighboring city, I have a relative who works with the ordinance, and I believe it's after two, two dings, like, say the grass isn't cut, that, then the city will come out, cut the grass, and they will charge them a hefty fee. And then also, the homeowner, if it's a rental, the homeowner...
Send me the address.
Okay.
Send me the address.
Me as well.
Okay. And so now we have a police officer that, so we've also had an issue with dogs from this house that's attacked, several dogs. There has never been, as far as I know, and I could be misspeaking, other cities or the neighboring city that I'm referring to, they would, a warrant would have been issued and the dog would have been pulled. The dog has never been pulled, there's been multiple dogs. So this is a problem house. So I don't understand that, why the dogs can't be pulled. I hear different information from people in the city of why it's not done and why it is done. I don't know, but I think if it's a dog, that's a problem, they should be, the dog should go, or something, anyway, I could be misspeaking, but that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The dogs, the dogs have bit multiple dogs, multiple people.
You know what House I'm talking about.
Okay, any other public comment? Councilman Abdullah has one email we got that he's going to read, and then we'll be done.
Thank you, Council Chair. So I've got a public comment from one of, I'm not sure if it's a resident or not, but she sent us and asked us to read it. My name is Casey Messiter, and I am the Policy Analyst of Detroit Disability Power. Tonight, I'm writing to urge the city of Dearborn Heights to end all contracts with Allen Brothers Firm following the owner, James Allen's recent horrific ableist, ableist behavior. To say that such behavior is unfitting for someone in his position would be a gross understatement. This city needs to show up for its eight thousand seven hundred and six residents with disabilities who are counting on you to represent them. Support our community and stand proudly against ableism. I urge you to publicly condemn the heinous comments that were made and end your relationship with Allen Brothers Firm until they undergo anti-ableism training by a disability-led organization. Thank you for your time. Casey Messiter, Detroit Disability Power Policy Analyst. She slash her. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
Adjourned by Councilman Maydo, supported by Councilman Abdullah, Abdullah, Abdell Haak. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Meeting end.